Call a meeting to order. Join me.
It's the only way we can eat.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can we have a roll call, please? Kurtz?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Lenias?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Grover?
Yes.
Olafland?
Yes.
Thank you. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Hill, second by Grover. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion carried. Next is public comment. First is Mary Kay Miller in regards to Brimmer Park.
My name is Mary Kay Miller. My address is 1303rd Street Northwest, number 19 in Independence. I'm chaplain of the American Legion Auxiliary and I was walking at Brimmer Park this afternoon. You have a pole, but you have no American flag flying. You have a beautiful view of the mill. Would be a welcoming sight for people to come in to look at your city. And you do not have any rope attached. Perhaps you could address this at a meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. The next two people that have signed in both have for the proclamation. Is this the one with the Navy thing or something else? Oh, okay. Jessica?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Jessica Delsid. I live at 208 Third Avenue Northeast in Independence. My husband Tyler and I have been residents of Independence for two years in July. On March 8th of this year, I sent Mayor Davis an email requesting a proclamation declaring May 4th, 2017, as a day of reason for the city, as well as an explanation of the importance of such a proclamation. I know that at least two other residents of Independence, as well as the Eastern Iowa Atheist group, have sent similar requests around the same time. To my knowledge, none of the requests have received a response. I am here tonight to make that request again.
Okay.
Is there any way I can get a response at this time?
Not at this time, no.
Okay. May I add then? If you truly consider Independence to be a city devoted to growth through commitment to overall fiscal well-being and long-term sustainability, and a city that's on the move, as you wrote on the city's website, then I am sure you understand how inclusiveness of all residents, regardless of race, sexual orientation, or religion, is imperative to that success. Although this proclamation would not be binding, it gives atheists, nonreligious, and other minorities in Independence some hope that its government sees them, respects them, welcomes them, and wants them to be successful. In addition, I thought that this was a reasonable request, considering that the mayor has issued proclamations for St. James' Day on May 4th, 2014, and for Catholic Schools Week on February 2nd, 2017. Thank you.
I'd like to comment, okay? And I will tell you, I don't... I have a lot of friends who are atheists. I have a lot of friends who are Muslims from my travels around the world. I have absolutely no problem with, you know, the religious diversity. I'm not exactly sure what... You said it was a...
It's a day of reason.
Day of reason? I guess I'm not familiar with that.
And I actually had...
Something, I guess, we can talk about.
Yeah, it's in the email that I sent. It actually has the entire proclamation laid out. And it's just, you know, saying that it's a day of reason and that just using scientific method and other such things, you know, would be applied, and that there is some separation between religion and government.
I guess we can talk about it. I'm still a little lost on... It's just a day to...
It's a national day of reason. There's actually three other cities that are doing it. Iowa City, Cedar Rapids, and Waterloo. There's a fourth city that's actually in the works. They're supposed to be doing it hopefully tomorrow. Also, Governor Branstad has also issued it in the past and plans to do so again this year.
Is that the first weekend of May?
It's May 4th.
So it's a day to recognize atheism and every... Just religious diversity?
Just nonreligious issues. I actually had the entire proclamation with me and I don't have it now, but perhaps the next person can...
Okay. We'll figure it out. Okay, thank you.
Are you Tyler?
Hi, my name is Tyler Hupp. I just wanted to follow up with that because I sent an email as well with the same subject. And one of the things I wanted to add too is that that kind of proclamation would give credence to nonsecular citizens such as myself, because when I moved here, I came here for work. I saw Independence as a great way or a good place to live, safe, also as a great place to invest, small businesses as well as real estate. So I just wanted to just add just some more power behind that, because proclamations such as that would give a voice to people who are secular, nonreligious, atheists, just as myself. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, next I need a motion to accept and approve the consent agenda that approves the following. The minutes of the March 27th, 2017, regular council meeting. City financial statements for the month of March. Fire department financials for the month of March. Waiver a City of Independence code to section 17.22. Yard signs of the planning and zoning ordinance on April 28th through April 30th, 2017, and police department technolab... Technology disposal items. Tongue tied. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion from Olafland, seconded by? And your name is? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion carried. Next is the approval of claims.
I do... I was making a note about this day of reason, but I have a question on the... Test America Laboratories. Is that something to do with the police? There was a charge... Just Test America Laboratories lab analysis. Was it something to do with police?
It's like $400?
$2,000. $2,030.
That's Mark.
Yeah, I think that's Mark Luloff's in the water department.
Okay. I thought it was something to do with... I thought you guys were... No, I didn't know if they were...
Has a W behind it? That means the water department.
Okay. Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the bills.
I'll second it.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion carried. Under petitions from the public, I have Officer Lau here.
Good evening. Last... Or in March, I issued out a press release just informing the citizens of our junk policies and mowing policies and everything that we're diving into this spring. Shortly thereafter, we were contacted by KCRG to do a little short news interview. And following doing that, I think it actually helped, because we had started with several citizen complaints, as well as other ones, properties that I had started. And before I could get to some properties that were on my list, they were already being cleaned up. So I'm guessing that there was a lot of talk on that news interview clip that actually showed some of the properties that we deal with here in town. And so I think that encouraged people to get out and start cleaning them up. We've also been making sure to let people know about our Amnesty Day, which will help people. So as far as that goes, that's pretty much all I got for you, unless anybody has any questions or concerns with your...
Could you give me an update on that project they had going on with the light plant?
It's set for court right now at the beginning of May. So... And I went by the other day and pretty much the entire property has been cleaned up. And the couch and different things that they had in the backyard that then got moved to the stoop, those were completely gone now. They have, I think, two cabinets that are sitting out in the yard currently, but that's the only thing that's left on the property that needs to be taken care of.
I went by there a little bit ago. Their swimming pools caved in on them. Wouldn't give you four bucks for a swimming pool.
No, no. But they've done quite a bit of work, but not done yet, but...
Those kayaks, they just hid them behind the bushes.
Right. And unfortunately, certain things like that don't follow under code for being out in the yard. But the stuff that does, I'll have to take a look at the swimming pool issue, but I plan to revisit a meeting with them before the court.
They had garbage piled up by the front door, or the doorknob this morning.
Maybe the kayaks are for the pool.
They won't float in there. Okay, when you say they are going to go to the pool...
But yeah, it's set for court right now, the beginning of May, that first week of May. And I'll revisit with them probably a week before court to check the property, to see if anything needs to be still done.
Should revisit the neighbor, because he's the one really complaining.
Right. And I've stopped and talked to him before.
He stopped and talked to me at nine o'clock this morning.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I'll make it a point to stop and talk to him again.
That's not the reason I went up there, other than to paint my light, though.
Nice that you did that.
That's all I got.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it when you come.
Thanks.
Next on the agenda is the Upper Deck Concert Agency. I don't see him here.
I don't think he's here.
We need to approve the weekend that he was asking about, June 23rd and 24th, the concert. We talked about this at the meeting of the whole.
Correct, at the committee of the whole. I would expand that and ask for the council's permission if they grant this two-day concert event at the band shell to include city staff time being reimbursed or billed out, if you will, to the concert promoter, because this is a for-profit entity. And if we do something like this, I think that it would not be fair for the citizens to pay for that. And that would give us the authority, if you will, to enter into a discussion with him to make sure that we recoup those costs.
Is this the guy's right name? Bob?
It's Rob.
Rob Hawken?
Rob Hawken.
Wasn't sure for Bob.
Rob.
Robbie, when he was growing up, it was Robbie that...
Okay. It's like...
He went to school there.
It was just a question. I got the wrong name.
It would also involve...
One question. This isn't fair weekend, is it?
No, no.
Nope, okay. Didn't want that to...
Fair's normally later in July, isn't it?
Right after the 4th, isn't it?
Yeah, it's a couple of weeks before.
Yeah. And just to make...
Weekend before. No. Fourth of July is Monday, Tuesday. It's not the weekend right before, it's one or two days before then.
Okay.
The fair is when?
The fair is the same week as the 4th.
Oh, yeah.
But this is two weekends before.
Correct.
I just wanted to make sure we weren't going to hurt the fair.
Correct. This would, and he hasn't brought it up, but generally when we set up for this type of an event, it does involve closing at least one block of city street in that neighborhood by the park as well. And just for ease of process, I would think that you'd be looking at that as well. Maybe he hasn't gotten to that point of figuring it out, but I think you'd want to plan on that, just like we do for the Fourth of July Celebration Committee.
Because he did say you wanted fencing up, for us to put the fence up like we do for some of the other events?
He had asked for fencing and use of the park, which is fine. You know, we had a brief discussion about liquor license and what that may or may not look like. And Mr. Beatty and I have had a brief conversation of, you know, concerning what that would entail for us, if that's something that the city should be involved in in some manner or another, or if he should just completely be on his own. And I don't have an answer for you there yet, but more importantly, all of those things that are going to go along with that, setting the fence up, closing the street to keep the traffic on the east side of the park to a minimum, and that's where generally the several of the trailers have been set up in the past for the Fourth of July. What is it, coming around Nelson Avenue? Some of that area in there, you want to be thinking about closing those, I would anticipate. So...
He would be responsible for his own porta potties and all that sort of thing.
Porta potties. We do have anticipated some law enforcement or security issues. I mean, whether or not they contract with us, I would hope they have their own security, which he alluded to, but it would involve some added patrol, I would assume, from our law enforcement. There's a lot of little pieces in there, so if you make the motion to approve this, which I don't have a concern about, I want to make sure that you're doing it with the understanding of all these pieces that are going to fall into place there, and we have permission to engage in setting that up.
Should we table this till we know all the answers to this?
No, 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 no. I don't think there's a need to table it.
Let's just vote on it and he can... That gives him the right to go ahead and do all of them. Otherwise, we get the cart before the horse and we never get anywhere.
And like he said last week, if we make him wait too long, the odds of him booking a band that he's wanting to book comes less and less.
This isn't...
So...
I don't think it... I'm sure all these little things are easy to check off and...
The motion would be to also meet the city's requirements as far as...
Yeah. Right. I think we just give Al the... And Rob the authority to go ahead and negotiate it and get it done. Yeah. Right.
I guess I would... Being we have so little control over it, I'd just assume the city not share their liquor license, because things get out of hand, something happens.
Right. And that is a concern. Like I said, that's something that he had mentioned, but I'm fine with that. My biggest concern in bringing it up is not to muddy the water, but make sure you understand as a council that there are other pieces that Rob did not talk about, that I envisioned are going to come into play. And I just want to be realistic and upfront about that before you approve it. I assumed it would look a lot like the Fourth of July. I see it very much as a very... They'll have the fence up a week early force. I agree. Yeah. I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
And your motion's going to include what your motion is?
Well, to basically go ahead and give Al and Rob the authority to finalize the details and move forward with the concert activities.
Okay.
How late are we going to let this run? Has that been decided?
That has not been decided. I think that 11 o'clock is late enough. I don't know that there's a need to run much later than that. Of course, if you leave him... If you let him go till 1:00, he will. But I think being the residential neighborhood that you're in, I think 11 is late enough.
I recall he said midnight, but I could be mistaken.
Well, he asked about Ragbrai. He wondered if... And the band was playing at midnight at Ragbrai. It was down there.
Yeah, which, for the Fourth of July, generally, they're getting pretty close to cleaned up and out of there by 10:30 to 11:00, depending on the band. If I remember right, the third last year, they played a couple of encore songs and were on the stage till 10:30, 10:45, but most of the time, they're done by 11:00. Ragbrai was kind of a special exception and played until a little after midnight.
Well, this is kind of an exception, too. It's not something you do every day.
Yeah.
I don't have any problems with midnight anyway.
I don't have any problems with midnight.
I mean, it's all fine details that, you know, we can get worked out, too. So if we just let Allen him hammer out the fine details...
He's doing it for money and every hour, especially on the bottom end of it. There's a lot of money transactions in that last hour.
When people start drinking enough, they eventually stop drinking.
I have a Mr. Dahlbeck don't live very far from there now.
We will have to have a specific council action to extend the time, whether it be 11:00 or midnight. So that'll come back to you before he can have the event. I'm not worried about giving him permission to do that. That's one of those details, but because it's changing the city ordinance or waiving it, you do have to take that specific action.
Okay, so the motion is to approve the request to hold a two-day concert event, the band show, on June 23rd, 24th, and allow Al to work out details with Rob. Does that... Everybody understand that? Okay. Do you want a roll call on this then?
Yeah. Kurtz?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Lenias?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Grover?
Yes.
Olafland?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion is carried. Next, under resolutions, we have the NSF, Non-Efficient Fund Check Policy, that we against discussed at our meeting of the whole, to modify it for wavering the fee for receipts intended to be donations. So you have attached different things that were involved in that.
Second.
Okay. Motion and second on that. Any other questions? You want a roll call again?
Yes. Hill?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Lenias?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Grover?
Yes.
Olafland?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion is carried. Next, under new business, is the rotor repayment agreement for the IRS audit, again, that we discussed at the meeting.
As a reminder, this is for the city's portion of the payroll taxes on the retirement contribution to the 457B plan.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Motion and second to approve.
Are we paying just half of it and you're paying the other half? Is that right?
Correct.
And you're doing it out of payment, payroll deductions?
This agreement is through to set up the payroll deduction.
Okay. You want a roll call again?
Hannah?
Yes.
Lenias?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Grover?
Yes.
Olafland?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried. Conflict of interest policy. Motion to approve a city conflict of interest policy for Independence employees, elected and appointed officials. And that is also attached.
So when somebody fills this out, we're going to know what the conflict of interest is among city council or...
This is a public document. It's a, you know, public record. It identifies potential conflict of interest. We have some employees that have the same last name or family members that have businesses in town that we do business with, we should do business with, but this identifies it upfront. The state auditor has been looking at this more stringently each year for the last three years, actually. Two years ago, I know Carter went through some extensive background to look at the potential for conflict of interest for, you know, at the state auditor's request. So what this does is identify those potential conflicts upfront. It acknowledges to the state auditor that we're aware of them. We go through them. We can share this with the auditors. We'll do it annually. It's something that would normally be filled out the first meeting in January each year, and just confirms that there is or is not the potential for a conflict.
So if my brother sold a group health policy to the city, that wouldn't be a conflict of interest?
That would or would not? Would it? Not usually, but if you own the company with him, yes, it would. So you have to have a direct...
Financial link.
Financial interest in the deal. So that's where the devil's always in the details. But...
It might be a good idea just to disclose it and then you're covered.
That's the purpose of it.
It's like buying parts for the police cars that advance auto parts and I work part-time.
Sure.
Okay. I don't think I had a motion or second on that one, did we?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Lenias?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Grover?
Yes.
Olafland?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried. Next on the agenda is the Cousy Property Lease, we discussed at the council whole meeting. That is also attached. We need to fill in for how long?
I did talk with Mr. Cousy. He has agreed to a three-year term. Three years is the longest we can do without having a public hearing to have several other additional steps, because of the nature of a lease longer than three years, as stated in Iowa code. I think Carter is more eloquent than I am at that, but three years would allow him to have an extended use of it. It's an annual payment. Other terms are the same. The only other change in there is we added a stipulation that should there be an impending or pending flood event, that he'd be responsible for moving any personal property off the lots. Same language that would be in any additional leases that are out there, and we do have others that are interested in similar FEMA property under the same terms.
Those would also be three-year ones?
That's correct.
Okay.
I move. We accept it.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I'll ask again about if there's more than just his stuff on the property, because if we start leasing out these properties around town and one person puts stuff on it and then let somebody else put on it, there's nowhere to stop that at, if you're letting one person do it.
Again, the leases between the city and Mr. Cousy in this case, if he's allowing other people to put property on there...
They should pay if they're used to it.
Eventually, it's going to turn into an issue that Mr. Lau is going to address, if that's the case. But I don't know that I have a way of precluding that specifically.
It does say in there they can't do any subleasing.
They cannot sublet it.
Correct.
They can allow other... I think the question that I heard was can they allow other people to put their property on that? I'm not sure that I have a way to police that or to, quite honestly, prevent it.
Well, that'd be their own peril.
Well, yeah.
It would be at their own...
I was going to say, it's one of those if I ask him if I could park my camper there once a week because I'm going out boat... Or park my boat there once a week because I'm going out boating, and he said, sure, that's fine, I'm not going to charge you anything for it, there's not a whole lot we can do if he lets me park it there overnight once a week, because it's not there long enough for it to be our... Against our policy for sitting for too long and... Yeah.
I think the primary goal, again, was that the property's being maintained and we're not sending our crews out to maintain it. We are covered or indemnified with insurance. We have a nominal revenue stream from that, and if there's any property taxes generated because of the private use or the nature of the use of the land, we would receive that.
He's going to maintain it and mow it and stuff?
Has been. And quite honestly, doing as nice a job as any of our parks guys can do, and it's just one more parcel that we don't have to go out and, you know, take care of.
And Dustin did comment that he even snowblows the sidewalk all the way to the corner and everything.
Okay, and we'll ask for a roll call, please. Oh, I'm sorry.
Since Todd's actually rented this place, he's taken very well care of it. Actually, a couple of times I've helped him mow the grass because of that mow at the same time. Mike, his neighbor, they do have a, was a boat and a ski at one time, but they're moving. I know I've parked there from time to time, just maybe a truck or something here and there because I needed to move it. But other than that, I mean, it's, he always takes care of it, he parks everything usually in a row, it's not all over the place. He has everything most of the time, usually it's covered up, his camper's covered, his boat's covered, I mean, something usually over top of it. He moves them to mow around it so it makes sure all the weeds and stuff are down, so he don't have one growing up between the tires and so forth. He does a very good job of taking care of this property. So it's one that I would never worry about having it come to a part where Officer Lau would have to go look at it because of all the junk and stuff sitting on there. It's right where I can see it from my backyard and he's two houses closer than I am, so he can keep track of it and actually watch it quite a bit, so. No, he does a really good job of it.
It does look nice, but I'm just saying that if somebody else leases a piece of land and they say, oh, you can park your camper here, you can park your camper here, and if we allow one person to let him have somebody else's stuff, we've got to allow everybody to do it.
The only time that would, I mean, it's kind of like renting a house, I mean, you rent a house, you can let somebody else put their stuff in your house if you want to. You can't really stop them from doing so.
It's a little bit different, this is city property.
True, but it's just like renting it from somebody else, that's the thing, is you're, you're renting it out. So, as I said, I don't see any issues, and if it gets to the point where we actually have a lot of problems, a lot of cars and stuff sitting there, Officer Lau can easily look at junk vehicles and the nuisance issues, so.
I have a concern from one in the southwest where I've seen a lot of moors and things like that, that I'm concerned that if we do perform the lease act with that group, that we're not going to see much improvement of the.
Quite the opposite. In order to secure the lease, there is a certain amount of cleanup that has to happen there, and I've already met with one of the two parties that are involved in that parcel.
Because one of the neighbors behind him has called me in.
Right.
With, with having a lease, what I see, you have more control of it because they have to stand by these and they have to follow it, if not, you can terminate the lease and take.
Yeah.
Move all your stuff off it.
You bet.
So that's, that's the thing about it, if, if it does get, one of them gets out of, out of control, you just say, okay, terminate the lease and you're done.
Yep.
We have a self-leasing way to, to take care of it.
Right. And, and the one that you're concerned about, which I understand, and I have been down there, but I've met with, I've talked to them both, I've met with one, I'm waiting for a conversation with the second, but I think we have more control over that, and that's been part of the conversation.
I just, both two neighbors on the other side have said.
Okay. Do something with it.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, we do have a motion and a second, I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Rover?
Yes.
Alafman?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Lenias?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried, thank you. Next is the traffic control light settings. Motion to authorize a change in the light signal timing. You want to address that?
The, the real issue I have here is I, I haven't heard any pushback or concern on changing the, the timing to allow the pedestrian crossing, which is the initial goal. The real question comes in as to whether or not during the overnight hours, the Highway 150 lights go to flashing red on the right-hand turns and yellow on the left-hand turns for Highway 150. And, and that's the real question, I thought we should bring it up and formalize that action, but that's the only question. I, I did hear pretty clearly that the 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM seemed to be okay for the flashing lights. I know that Dustin had, had shared a concern about maybe that's not the best idea either for the overnight hours. So for the council's discussion that's on the table is to, we want to stretch out or lengthen the time of the stoplights to allow pedestrians an opportunity to cross the street safely and synchronize them all the way through town. It's, it's not just changing it on one light or another, it's a, a process.
I think I agree with the synchronization, I think I would eliminate, I would not do the flashing on 150. I, I think we're asking for more problems there. I don't know.
Is there flashing on there now?
No.
Not?
Right now, all through the night, they just run like they do during the day.
It's the other side streets.
I'd agree with John, I don't, don't want to do flashing on 150.
Yeah, which I, I think the 150 lights, we should not have the overnight setting on myself, too.
My main concern on it would be in the morning when everybody's trying to go to work, and get more of a congestion there. I'd say if it's something that the council wants to go through, could, if we would go that route, can we try it for a short period of time, see how it would fall, and if it works out that way, then keep it that way, if not, maybe go back to the way it is now. That would be my only concern, is if the council decides to go with that.
What's the other police officer's thought on it, do you know?
I haven't really talked to many of the night guys, I don't see them, they all. I know I talked up to, or talked to Brian and Darwin briefly on it, and there might not be much traffic at night, just depending on the hours and so forth, so if it's a weekday in the middle of the night, it probably won't have much of an effect. But it's mainly the, once people are starting to go to work, that might cause more issues.
Because the one down by heartache drug, drug flashes, doesn't it?
Yes.
And the one on second does. What time do those stop flashing and go to regular lights? Is that six in the morning now?
All, all the lights that go to the overnight mode turn back at six, six in the morning.
Okay. I'm never out at those hours, so I have no idea what's going on down there.
It's, I can always tell what time it is.
I can start staying up later.
Right before or right after they change. That being said. I don't remember what I was going to say now.
Sorry.
It's been a long morning.
So is your concern?
I was up before six today and not.
Is your concern the?
They were still flashing.
Time that the flashing lights go back to regular or?
My concern.
150 should be flashing also, what, which are you addressing?
No, my concern of any of it is 150, the, the stopping and the turning on red, if you get a bunch of cars that stop and turn, stop and turn, stop and turn, you're going to either start backing them up or you're just going to have people running red lights, is my concern. Because going the other direction, they're going to be flashing yellow if I'm understanding correctly, so they're just going to go and take a left turn right away. But the ones that might be going south on 150 as soon as they turn that right, if they all have to stop there, you're going to start backing them up if you get quite a few in the morning. So just depending on what time that you guys turn, would turn it from flashing to the actual changing colors.
Yeah, because I, I know even when I'm on the road at, you know, 5:50 in the morning, there are times where I'm in, at that stoplight and it just turned red and there's a stopped 60 but cars already, so.
I just leave them the way they are. You know what, if it's not a problem, I wouldn't change it.
And they can still synchronize them without the flashing?
Absolutely, yeah, that's not a problem at all. And, and again, the synchronization, there's a, an AM and a PM, uh, timing for the flow of traffic moving east and, and west, you know, respectively, so not an issue. Really, the, the most significant change is from what we see today is moving from the east to the west in the morning. After that, everything seems to be pretty consistent for traffic flow, so won't be a problem, we can work with that. I just asked for a motion to maintain current signal. What's the word I'm looking for?
I will make the motion to synchronize the lights while maintaining the current setup for Highway 150's lights where they do not have an overnight pattern.
Beautiful.
A question now, we're talking also of lengthening pedestrian crossing.
Yeah.
But how long, like from? Uh, going between Majestic and across, going south.
Yeah.
Do we know how long they're lengthening that time out to you? Because that is, that's a nightmare to do.
It, it is, and, and I, I can't remember the exact number of seconds that they're adding to it. It's just about double the time for pedestrians, and that doesn't double the time of the street light signal, but the amount of time that the pedestrian can cross the street. I think it's, it's adding 15 or 18 seconds to that.
To synchronize these, are we going to have to purchase any more equipment?
It's not purchasing the equipment, as I understand it, the, the lights themselves have controllers in them that have to be programmed. There is one controller that there was a question about, I haven't heard that they have any issues with, with programming that currently. So as far as I know today, everything works as is. It's just programming it.
We just got to find somebody who can program it.
Well, we have somebody that can program it. Kevin at Independence Light and Power has the, the folks that can do it. We've already approved going through that, so the whole question right now is what do we change it to? And that's what they're working on.
Okay.
I second the motion.
Okay, did you have something you wanted to add, Carter?
No, we just didn't have a second. It was on the, there was discussion before we had a second, so I was just.
Making sure we got everything done.
Right, I was just making sure.
Do you want to read back that motion, Gina, and then take a roll call?
Yeah, Carter and I talked about it, and the motion to change, to authorize a change in the light signal timing is okay because the flashing would be the sequence, so the timing would be okay.
So just changing the timing of the.
Okay.
Rover?
Yes.
Alafman?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Lenias?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carried. Next is the sidewalk agreement with the railroad. Motion authorized to change the light signal timing?
You're on the wrong one.
No, that got carried forward into the sidewalk discussion.
Yeah.
This has to do with the crossing sidewalk, crossing the railroad on Fifth Avenue Northeast. Mr. Donley did have a conversation with Chig Fry and with the, the new maintenance man at the railroad. The number has changed pretty significantly, they've dropped the insurance. We're actually down to $10,595 was the fee put forward by Chig Fry. The railroad did negotiate from a thousand-dollar permit fee down to $10, that was already in place. So at this point, our cost is $9,605.50 from Chig Fry.
But the flaggers were not in there.
Flaggers are not necessarily, we don't believe, they, they say as needed. There is a, a, I'll call him a local railroad man that said he would come over and, and provide that service if we give him a couple of days' notice. So the need for flaggers is basically nonexistent, if he can do that. The railroad insurance, they dropped it. Traffic control, the only question about traffic control is, because it is Highway 150, we have to have permission from DOT. Two ways to address that, either our street crew does the traffic control, so we're not paying for it, or we have permission from DOT to do a detour while we're primarily doing the pouring of the concrete and have the, the construction workers on this southbound lane of 150. We have detoured that in the past, DOT has allowed us to do that. So that would be the question on traffic control, and that's why it's, it's if needed.
Okay.
So what, originally was that 17,000?
Yeah, the original price was just over 17,000.
Plus.
Plus.
Plus another 7,000.
Plus the flat, no, no, that didn't include the flag.
So are you saying, oh, eight flaggers and we've cut 8,000 off?
Uh.
Is that what I'm understanding?
Basically, yes.
But Al, is that including any of the sidewalk, like by the creamery there or not?
No, that's going from the south limit of the railroad's right-of-way north across the tracks to 11th Avenue, or 11th Street Northeast. It has nothing to do with the, with Wopsey Valley Creamery, they've got a sidewalk to put in, theirs will go up to their property line immediately at that property line, it's a railroad. The railroad is, again, putting the rubber mats in across the ties. This would take us through the rest of that stretch there minus the rubber mats.
So you're talking what, 20 feet? Approximately. For $20,000?
Down to nine.
Well, 9,600.
Nineth, okay.
Yeah.
So rough that out and say 10, it's. Still cheaper than ours.
Well, it's not quite half.
So what, written in here is a motion to direct Crawford Engineering to proceed with the pricing estimate from Chig Fry excavating for the trail railroad crossing on Fifth Avenue Northeast. Is that what we want it to say or?
I think we need to add in based on the negotiated pricing.
Well, I, I think this is, in essence, giving staff permission to enter into a change order with Chig Fry to include this in the 2016 street project.
Can we say not to exceed?
Yes.
Well, you got the flagger that, even though he's going to do it on the cheap, you want to, you better have a little bit more room than just that 9,700.
Yeah, I, and again, we're just going off the conversations that we've had with, with Mike Schrader at Chig Fry and with the, with the railroad by it. I, I understand the concern.
But there's no plan to put a sidewalk like in front of Bobbin's and the laundromat there, and then go on down and put one in front of the depot, right? So you've?
We're not putting one in front of the depot at this point, I mean, there's, that's been designed for 10 years, but no, that was not part of this conversation.
The bikers.
The.
Or walkers or whoever, if they don't have.
And I think it's a more safe thing, a more safe way of getting across rather than walking across the tracks. Whether it benefits the bikers right now, I hope someday that we put in sidewalks so that they can continue all the way on past, you know, Bobbin and all the way. But I think even without that right now, it's a much safer way to get across rather than having people just walking out on the highway on the railroad tracks.
The, the question about Bobbin, it's, which is interesting, they are in the process of updating or replacing their parking lot, and we were asked if we need a sidewalk there. There's a half a block stretch in front of Bobbin's where there is currently no sidewalk, and we did request that they put the sidewalk in when they replaced their parking lot. It's a logical time to do it. So that half a block would be addressed yet this spring, from my understanding of it. There is still a stretch by the laundromat there that is not. You know, at, at this point, we can go and ask them to put that one in too, but with Bobbin doing a project, it's a logical time to do it, I'm not sure that I would rush out and, and demand it to be done otherwise. But you're, you're going to, if you decide that you want sidewalks, you're going to find that we do them a piece at a time when you have opportunity, as opposed to going citywide and, and doing a sidewalk, demanding sidewalks going every place they don't have them. That's not, in my opinion, very realistic. You'll, you'll take them as you can, as it makes sense.
Well, this has always been the hang-up. We've talked about doing this probably for 10 years, but the hang-up has always been, we get to the railroad crossing and there was no sense of asking people to put in the sidewalk. We ran a bunch of sidewalk from the Civic Center coming south, but we always came to that railroad crossing and it was like, why ask anybody else to do anything because it's?
Yeah.
It's a dead end.
Stopping point.
Yeah, so it's always been the fly in the ointment.
Okay, does everybody, so do we need, we need a motion on this? I don't think I heard the motion or second yet.
I would ask for a motion to enter into a change order to include this in the 2016 street project.
I'd make the motion but include a limit not to exceed 9,600, I think, is that what you said?
9,605.
9,605?
Make it 10,5 and that way.
I was, I was going to say, is that, is that including any of the actual cement?
10,5s would maybe, if that's what you.
10,5 would give you some room as Carter recommended.
Right.
So who is?
Do we have the money for this, for that project?
Yes.
Did John or Bob, did, did one of you two make that actual motion that he was suggesting for the?
I did.
Okay.
I just change it.
I'll second it.
10,5 for the limit, okay. So we do have a motion and a second. Are you ready, you want to read what the motion is before we do the roll call?
It's a motion to enter into a change order to add this to the 2016 street project with an amount not to exceed $10,500.
Okay. Roll call then.
Alafman?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Lenias?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Rover?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carried. Nice to get that one.
Can I ask one question? On the creamery sidewalk, is that going to go from the building to the curb or?
Yeah, it'll go from the curb up to the edge of our, that's where our plan is, from 10th Street Northeast up to the property line.
East.
Going north.
Oh.
Are you going to try?
I think you're talking about the width from the highway to the building, which would be.
My understanding, I think it's the building to the curb.
You're going to have a big, you're going to have enough parked cars there. That's going to be a good one.
Don't be telling that, that'd be.
No, but that, that'll be a good sidewalk for you.
I'll talk to Tyler in the morning.
I was going to say, in so many days.
Talk to Wilbur.
After so many days.
Talk to Wilbur about a mural.
You don't really care, right?
She's the guy who's putting pressure on me, I only got a certain number of days.
Yeah. Okay, next on the agenda is the RFQ submittal selection process.
The question on this one is just to set the day, time and date for the interviews for the four firms on each RFQ submittal. I had suggested a special committee of the whole or workshop for April 18th. If that does not work, May 1st is your next committee of the whole meeting.
I, I won't be able to on the 18th.
18th, that's.
That's a Tuesday. April 18th is a Tuesday, isn't it?
Doing the same thing, Carter.
Yeah. Just realized I'm a little behind the times.
Okay. Yeah, I was trying to sit there and think about what day that was.
We can do a different night, I was just trying to give an option that would move this forward for you two weeks earlier and do it before the last council meeting on the, of, of April. We can do it May 1st. If you want to do it that evening, it does If you want to do it that evening, it does get very full if you have any committee of the whole discussion outside of the interviews. And, and that was the only reason I was trying to find a night other than May 1st to do that.
I'll be honest, any evening works for me. Up until the end of the month anyways. Then my evenings start getting booked up again towards the end of the weeks.
So this would be a meeting to actually do the interviews of the four top engineering companies? Is that what we're talking?
Yes.
But for two different projects, so total eight actually?
Correct.
Okay. And you said the 18th did not work for you?
I can't, we've got an auction on the.
Okay.
Nineteenth, Wednesday, is that any better?
It's a Wednesday night. It's church night.
It's probably okay with me.
I can make the 19th work.
I can't guarantee I'll be completely awake, but I can make it work.
Getting close. Any, any night?
I'll check my schedule, but I think.
Yep.
The 19th is Wednesday?
Yeah. Okay, we're stuck on this. Nineteenth worked for everybody?
May 19th.
April night. April 19th, which is a Wednesday night.
Ten days.
Six thirty. Am I supposed to write this down, Mike?
We haven't got a motion or approved yet.
I think somebody will send us.
I'll send you a notice on it if everybody's okay with that.
Okay. Do we actually need a motion and second for it? It's, it's.
I, I'm okay with it either way. I just wanted to make sure because we were setting a, a special meeting that we did it when everybody was able to be here.
The 19th, was it?
19th.
Is that a year 2016?
I don't have to be here, do I? Seriously? Have choir night, Wednesday's choir night. I'll see what we're practicing.
You're, you're dumping out.
Are, are you gonna make us move it to Thursday now?
No, no, no. I'll just have to let my choir director know whether I'm not gonna be there.
April 19th.
Okay.
All right.
Of this year.
Of this year. So we don't need a motion or anything like that?
No, we're, we're fine on that.
And, and you'll line up as far as the interviews and the time?
I'll have it all set up for you.
Okay. Okay. What time did somebody say they wanted us to get out of here by?
Um, about half an hour ago.
Okay. Well, now we're down to reports and I'm going to pull rank and go first instead of asking any of you guys. Isn't that nice of me? Because one of the things that I need to do is I have a proclamation that I'm going to read here. We have an event coming up on April 28th. It'll be out at the high school, junior, senior high school auditorium with the United States Navy Sea Chanters. So the proclamation says, whereas since its creation, the United States Navy has played a vital role in the defense of the United States of America. And whereas the United States Navy Band Sea Chanters represent the Navy and foster the preservation of music by performing at government and military functions as well as for the enjoyment of the civilians of this nation. And whereas the United States Navy Band Sea Chanters, the official corps of the United States Navy from Washington DC are performing in concert at the Independence Junior Senior High School Auditorium on Friday, April 28th, 2017 at 7:00 PM. Now therefore, I, Bunnyna Davis, Mayor of the City of Independence, Iowa do hereby proclaim in honor of the United States Navy Band Sea Chanters Friday, April 28th, 2017 as United States Navy Day in Independence, Iowa, and urge all citizens to attend performance, performances by this outstanding organization given unto my hand and seal this 10th day of April. I have a granddaughter who is in the Navy. She is a air, airman apprentice, hasn't even been in for a year. She's stationed in Fallon, Nevada, so that's why I wore my Navy grandma shirt and, because I knew we were gonna do this. So we'll take pictures later with this, okay. We do have certain times that you can get the tickets, pick them up at the library. The tickets are actually free. You can not get more than four general admission tickets. And I have, we have a paper here if you want me to read the times that you can pick them up at the library if anybody wants that. April 17th, 18th, 19th, 21st and 22nd, they'll be there from 11 to 1:00 PM at the library. April 20th, they'll be there from 4 to 6 at the library. April 24th, 25th, 26th, can't be the 28th and 29th from 11 to 1:00 because 29th is after the event. So, April 27th from 4 to 6:00 PM until tickets. You probably can check at the library to see whether they're available. This is being put on by Laces, the organ group here in Independence. And Mary Kay Johnson is one of them that is in charge of this. I can have, I have her number if you need to call her. She's already got probably lots of people, so. That's my first item I have on my agenda.
Do you have one of these at the lib, at the library? It'd probably be a good idea and then people just can kinda call the library.
Um, yeah, if they call the library, they can find out when, because late, the people from Laces, member Laces members will be the ones at the library. If you call Mary Kay, she puts your name down and she'll have tickets, four tickets set aside with your name on it, but you still have to pick them up at the library during these times, so. Okay, next on my agenda was I talked to Doug Cook and because I've had, I've had several requests, I don't know what the rest of you as far as burning. And our ordinance that we have for backyard burning says that we will have backyard burning not including garbage at dwellings of four family units or less. Backyard burning shall only be done during two one-week periods in the fall and a 10-day period in the spring as designated by proclamation of the mayor and shall only be done after, after sunrise and before sunset. No backyard burning shall be done on any public sidewalk, curb and street. Doug and I visited about this and so we are setting April 21st through April 30th. We'll, we'll give you two weekends where people can legally do their burning of leaves and whatever.
April 21st to what?
April 21st through the 30th, which I believe covers two weekends for people. Easter's over with by then, so hopefully that will help.
Through the end of the month, is that it?
April 30th. Yeah, that is, that is the end of the month, 30th is. Have to go through the rhythm on that. Next thing I had is the fact that there's so much things going on in our town that I, hopefully lots of people are participating in. I see that our chamber director is actually here because one of the things I wanted to mention was last Saturday we had the chamber banquet out at.
Heartland Acres.
Heartland Acres, thank you, which we missed Bob, but the rest of us, we had a table, city people there. And they gave out some nice awards. We had good candidates, but one of the awards that was given was for project of the year was for our aquatic center. So Bob Beatty was there in it with a tie on. We took lots of pictures because I said I never seen him with a tie and long pants, no shorts. And when he accepted the reward, he did mention everybody that was on the citizens group that was a part of this and thanked everybody for their participation and their, their donations and things to that degree. We are planning on, and everything seems to be going on for or on schedule, that we're planning on having the aquatic center, aquatic open on Memorial Day weekend. And then we're looking at June 10th, two weeks later, to actually have our grand opening. So we wanted to make sure the community or citizens knew that and again, thank everybody that participated in this. Also, I, yesterday, was at the library, I'm trying to think what the name of the guy was that performed at the library. The library puts on a lot of interesting activities and performances and stuff that hopefully people are participating in that because there, most of them are free. Is, do you remember what his name was, Bob?
Jerry Barlow.
Jerry Bar, Barloo?
Barlow.
Barlow. Saying, singing, playing the guitar, it was interesting to watch him. I've never seen anybody play guitar like that. Very funny, I mean, my jaws were sore from laughing. He had a good sense of humor, so very entertaining, but.
But Mayor Davis, he make, he's made hundreds of dollars.
Yeah, hundreds of dollars. Somebody asked him what his real job was and he says, well, I make hundreds of dollars off of doing this. So, but he was, he was really good. He was fun. Also coming up on April 22nd, the tail wheels fly-in, drive-in breakfast at the airport will be from 8 to 11. And then there is a short safety seminar at 10 o'clock that's open to the public. The other thing that I had on my agenda was with our committee meetings that we've had, there's a couple of items that we've been looking at that we want, that we're looking to do. And I'm wanting to see if the citizens will participate in this, so I am making an invitation to anybody out there. Any of our citizens who are interested being on a task force to be looking into our police department where we will be doing that, a location in town and see what's gonna work there. And also, discussion has been made about putting in a dog park. That's been a request from different people. So I want to develop two different task force on that. So I'm asking anybody, any of the citizens to either send me an email at mayor@indetail.com or give me a call at 319-327-0674 and we'll try and get these committees put together. Our one that we have for the ordinance committee is going very well. We have five citizens that are a part of that and going through all our ordinance book and, and making progress and might be having some things to bring before the council here before too much longer for some adjustments or corrections or things like that to the, to our ordinance books. So those are just all things that, this is a great ti, town, so I hope people appreciate living here as much as I do, so. Now I'm finished. Dustin seems to be the only department head that's here. Do you have anything you would like to share?
To start with, the, part of the stuff you guys did today, you approved the, for us to dispose of some computers that we had in our, our office. When I took over and moved into the office or in our building we have, we have, I found we have a lot of extra computers that were older ones we don't need. We got some laptops from the REAC Center that were donated, that were, that were given to us. There's a few, at the bottom of the list, if you actually pulled that up, that about eight or nine of them that we actually never put into our systems, never actually used. So if you see on the side of that, it says donate. So those are ones that Officer Bowes is gonna look through and make sure they're up and running and then we can actually donate them to somebody who needs one. We've never used them, never put them into, under our name, never hooked them to our system, so we have no issues with the, the hard drive being, having in of our files that can't be out there in the public. So those are ones that I'd like to just say, say thank you for approving that. I'm gonna have him now start looking at those and seeing what we can do with them, where we can put them, who we can give them to. Today we had Titan and Officer Cass out at the high school. They asked us if they could come out and just search through the lockers and search around the parking lot, the buildings and stuff. So he had a couple other law firms, agencies that came out with their canines and looked through those, through the buildings and through the parking lot. Today are, I had a meeting with some of the county members and they're gonna actually have an Alice training at the courthouse, which Officer Isley's been asked to participate in beginning of May. Also, we were approved to host an alert training. Alert training is a government-funded operation where they actually come into our community as long as we have the school building, time to do it, and we have to have so many officers, so many seats for different officers to come through. What it is, is actually it's an active shooter school for the officer to be a part of so they actually can be a part of it as going through for, I'd say the bad guy in, in this situation, which I really don't like to talk about these situations, but we have to be aware of them and be prepared for them. So I went through this actual training and just up when they hosted it over there a couple years ago when I was a deputy. It's a great training. I'm glad that we could actually have it. They'll fly people from Texas up here, the actual trainers, they'll house them, they'll pay for all that stuff. All we have to do is make sure we have enough officers to be there and the buildings and so forth to do it. So it is all paid for through the state. We don't have to pay for anything for it, so.
You have a date on that as to when you're doing that?
Nope, I'm actually gonna try to head out to the high school tomorrow to see if I can actually lock down a few days. It's gonna take, it's actually a three-day training, so I'm locked down the three days we need for it.
What was the training again?
It's called alert. It's an active shooter training. The officers will come in uniform. They'll actually have guns that shoot us, so projectile. The trainers, the ones that are putting this on will actually be the, the target that we're looking for. They fill the hallways with smoke, they do a bunch of other stuff in it, loud noises, but they do a lot to get an officer not really prepared, because you never really can be prepared for a situation like that, but at least get us familiar with a scenario that might occur.
Did I hear you right, you said it's open to the public?
No.
Oh, I thought, I thought we were supposed to bring our own guns.
And this is gonna be done during the summer when schools close, so you have three days to.
Yes.
Put smoke in the hallways and.
Yep, yep. And then once everything done, I mean, everything that we have, it's all cleaned up and all taken care of, so we don't have to worry about anything when we're done with it, yeah.
Okay.
That's all I had. I actually have an officer that's working right now that needs my assistance. He just texted me a few seconds ago, so I'm gonna get out of here, guys. Thank you, you guys have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dustin.
Michael Loughlin, do you have anything you would like to report tonight?
Uh, just what we talked about with the lease agreements with the properties, just to make sure that the two neighbors that have called me three times asking me if that's gonna be the case, that was it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Austin?
Um, all I really have is I wanna say congratulations to Bob and everyone who's worked on the Aquatic Center. I'll, I'm ecstatic to see it open early this summer.
Yeah.
I, yeah, that's all I've got.
You gotta buy on swimming trunks?
I do have to buy swimming trunks.
Oh, do you have a buy on?
Oh, do I have a buy?
Buy out, special audit.
We have them out there.
Are they gonna buy?
They're not on, they're not on special yet. You'll have to wait till the end of the summer for that.
You got my size?
I don't know what your size is.
It's Walmart.
And we really, that's too much information. Too much information, don't want that.
I'll look for ones that say Danny.
Anything else? Now Daddy, do you have something you'd like to share other than your swimsuit size? We don't, we don't want that.
I can't think of any.
Okay. Mr. Lenios, do you have anything you'd like to share?
Nope, I don't have anything tonight.
Okay, Deb?
I've been asked by a few people what that big cement piece is on the street up.
Big cement.
Oh, along the edge there?
There is a, a cement beam, I guess for lack of a better term. It's a 30-foot beam that came from Iowa State University from their engineering lab. It was a, they used it for testing. County engineer Kyle Labor was able to get that for us and the Four Seasons Trail Committee arranged for the transportation from Ames to bring it up here to use on our, one of our trail projects coming up, either on Sixth Avenue Southwest or on the Highway 150 Enterprise Drive Trail to offset some of the cost because on both pieces, there'll be a bridge or a pedestrian bridge that we'll have to put into place. So they were trying to find a way to make it more cost-effective. The beam has to be stored someplace, so we're storing it there until we get the, the trail project underway.
Okay. Mr. Hill, how many days you got left to retire it?
Let's see, 14 and a half maybe?
I thought you'd have it down to minutes by now.
I was gonna say, you mean you don't have it calculated down to the second?
Well, I, actually I do. My daughter sent me one of these timer things. I'm not sure how to run it, so.
Do you have anything else you'd like to share?
Well, I just wanted to say if the program with Mr. Barlow at the library, he was, he was excellent and sense of humor was, was great. I, I enjoyed it. Library should be commended. My younger daughter is now living in North Liberty, which is much bigger community and she said she was, since she's been down there, she's been a little disappointed because she's looked at the programs their, their library has and that they have very little for adults. So we should be very proud of the programming we get at our library.
They don't even have a bookmobile that this guy could play at?
I love that story.
Yes.
Mr. Barlow played at one small town in North Dakota. Don't take offense, Al.
Yeah.
But he said that he got there and he couldn't find the library and had a convenience store. The guy says, there it goes, down the road, bookmobile. And he said, I was so happy, I had a crowd of one, he applauded every song. Fortunately, he didn't leave because he was the driver of the bookmobile. And they had a touching moment when he turned the radio down so that he could hear him playing.
Yeah.
So he, he was just really, really enjoyable. He was just really, really enjoyable.
Okay.
I had the opportunity Friday to take a tour of the wastewater plant with Mark Luoff, and I wanted to thank him for that. It was quite eye-opening. And then Saturday, I had a tour of the airport with Jonathan, so it was a good week. The other thing I wanted to bring up is on this dog park issue. I think that would get a lot of citizen involvement.
I hope so, get lots of emails.
Paper about that, I think there'd be people that'd be interested in that.
Do you know anybody with the paper?
Any local papers that might be able to put that in the, in the thing about our minutes of our meeting or something?
You're gonna have to buy a dog.
Anything else?
That's all I got.
Okay. Gina?
I've been working on a presentation for Board Docs, that's our agenda management software. Independence was noticed by some of their developers and asked to be featured in one of their webinars. So I'll be co-hosting a webinar with one of the Board Docs presenters on, I think it is May twenty-ninth, I believe, or thirtieth. So Independence will be completely featured in that webinar.
Very good. Anything else?
No, that's it.
Carter?
No, thank you.
Glad you're here. Al?
One last call for those that might have an interest in the Iowa State University, it's called the Iowa Government Finance Initiative Workshop. It's a tool-based training for local elected and appointed officials. May eighteenth in Cedar Rapids at the Lynn County Extension Office. I know that a couple of you have expressed interest, and we've got you registered, but May eighteenth from six to nine, excuse me, five-thirty, they will feed you, and six o'clock, the program starts, runs from six to nine. If you have an interest...
We are meeting PM, not six AM.
We are talking PM.
Want to make sure I double check that.
So if you have an interest, please let me know. It is an evening meeting, and we will arrange for carpooling.
Okay.
Got my note, I found out I'm supposed to be in Missouri.
Yes, we unregistered you.
Thank you, I'd like to stay married.
With all the extra time on your hands, we thought that might be important.
I'm sadly supposed to be at work, and I'd like to stay employed.
I know.
No, 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 on the eighteenth. Or at least, to the best of my knowledge, at this time, I'm supposed to be at work that night.
And that's all I have.
Okay. Then I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Let's go.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose the same, motion carried. Meeting adjourned.